Together with all of you, property owners, neighbors and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and a unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available in the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners and the larger community. Before we get started, what I'd like to do is to ask you if you could maybe shift over to the other side because about half of you are hidden by the display. Well, you could do that too, but I think they want that centered. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, would the board members now introduce themselves?
Sam Sicarelli, 3rd ward.
Rosemary Care, 2nd ward.
Mike Adelman, 4th ward.
Cardi Davis, 3rd ward.
Angela Didal, 4th ward.
Dan Jassica, 4th ward.
And Stuart Dixon, 1st ward.
Staff, introduce yourself.
Kathy Cerniac, Director of Community Development.
Thank you very much. Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the November 22 regular meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion for approval? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. The next thing that we have is a continuing petition, but before we get into that, I'd like to ask if there are any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts relative to this petition from anybody?
No.
Okay, again, I'd like to state that I am a member of First Presbyterian Church, but I do not believe that that will affect anything that I have to do with this petition. The request from the First Presbyterian Church, 700 North Sheridan Road, for an amendment to the special use permit to authorize the incorporation of the property at 750 North Sheridan Road into the church campus. The property is proposed for continued residential use as a manse, a residence for the pastor and open space for church use. Owner, First Presbyterian Church of Lake Forest, Representative John F. Johnson, Executive Director. What I'd like to do now is to swear in everyone that will be speaking. If you could stand, all of those that are going to be speaking. Oh, you're the only one? Nobody else is gonna? Okay. Anybody else? All right, raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will... John, are you the one that's gonna give the presentation?
Chairman Davis, members of the board, we appreciate the opportunity to return from our November discussions. You gave us some guidance at that time. You said we need to continue to be respectful of the neighbors. We need to be respectful of the historic neighborhood and we need to be respectful of the dialogue for all parties, including the staff and the city. So, we have made every effort to do that. We had a meeting with the neighbors and the city staff, Kathy, the second week of December. We had some good feedback as a result of that. We had an initial redesign of the landscape backyard area. We presented that redesign to the neighbors the second week of January. We had some further discussion and good input. We agreed to take some pictures from the neighbor's house about the viewpoints that were important to Mr. and Mrs. Landis. We did that last week ago, Monday. We incorporated those viewpoints into the revised plan that we sent to everyone on Wednesday and then subsequently submitted to the city. So, this is the revised plan. I put it here because the 11 by 17 might not be large enough. It'll be the same one we show on the screen. Just to refresh everyone's memory from the November, we've had two holidays since then. We're here to talk about the specific 750 residence, which is historic in nature. It resides, and I'll use the pointer this time because I realized maybe everyone couldn't see the... This is the 750 manse on Sheridan, and most of the discussion was around the back of the property. We have some further information we'd like to share with you about that. This is the front of the church. We have been very successful in integrating some of the existing landscaping into the new landscaping, providing both deciduous and evergreen, compatible and sympathetic with the neighborhood. We are keeping the front. We're gonna improve the landscape around the front, but we're keeping the front as it is. We have painted it, we have tuck pointed, we have done some exterior painting and sealing of the windows. Here are some views from the backyard from the 1930s, and you'll notice that nice arched gate right here in the garden. We're gonna continue that theme into the new design. So, the new design is shown, I think in your packets, it's shown here and here, so we can answer any questions you might have. We have plans to take care of this area right here, which was most of the neighbor's concerns. We have agreed with the city and the neighbors about the location for the parking, which would be along the fire lane. We have agreed to put in a fence along here and put in screen-type landscape that would be protective of the sightlines from the neighbor to the west. We have agreed to extend the fence here, which doesn't exist, and here. We have also taken a look at all the sightlines and provided a true screen with arboida that would cover the fence from the neighbor's perspective. And the additional trees that are deciduous would provide additional screening during the times when perhaps the neighbors might see activity in the backyard. We've also taken careful examination of the other areas. We've extended this yard to make it larger. There was some concern that it wouldn't be really a residential yard, so we've made this larger. We have provided a meditation area for seating here. We have been respectful of the 20-foot buffer, landscape buffer. Overall, the parking, if you were to count the existing garage surface, the driveway surface that exists there, and the garden house, that's the total of the 2,750 square feet. We were asked to make that an understandable number, not just a percentage. And we have taken great care to look at the viewpoints from the neighbors to be sure even a gate here wouldn't cause any problems. They're concerned with seeing parked cars, so we are gonna screen any parked cars. I mentioned the last time we finished first floor work, we are gonna work on the second So, we request use of a special permit, special use permit. We have had a number of meetings with the neighbors where we have listened to their concerns about parking, about lighting, about landscaping, about use. And we've talked about examples of use. Use for Sunday school class that might be under the trees in the May through September timeframe. Use for a family after a funeral or wedding to gather in a green space that would be protected and private. And we would limit the access by gate and fence, so it's not viewed as a public park, it's viewed as part of the church property. We've met several times, and we appreciate all the suggestions. I talked to all the neighbors personally over the last two weeks, talked with one of the neighbors today, this afternoon. So, we've been harmonious in all of our discussions recently. So, thank you for the guidance and thank you for the opportunity to come back again.
Okay, thank you very much. Staff?
Thank you, Chairman Davis, members of the board. Although this petition, working through the process, I think took longer than perhaps everyone would have liked, I think this is proof that the process does work. Great cooperation, compromise, great ideas on the part of the church and on the part of the neighbors. I was involved in several of the meetings, not all of them, and not all of the discussions, but efforts were made not only to meet, but as Mr. Johnson mentioned, even to go so far as to go up into some of the upstairs bedrooms and view the site from different perspectives. So, I think what you have before you is really the work of all parties working together. I don't know if you have any of the neighbors here tonight. I don't recognize any. I did hear from several of the neighbors. Mr. Marsh was here just a few moments ago. They did indicate that they support the project, that they support the conditions. They feel that all of the conditions are important. They have had the opportunity to review the conditions, so you do have 16 conditions in front of you. I won't go through each of them, but they do speak to the intended use. They do speak to the intended buffering, both in landscape and in fencing. And importantly, they do designate an area for future parking if the church chooses to move forward with that. It is on the very east side of the 750 property. That is the only place where parking could go on this site. The church does not have to install it, but if they do, there would be appropriate fencing and buffering. As we looked at the property from different viewpoints, I think importantly, the new garage will actually serve to provide some important screening for the house to the west of current views directly into the existing parking lot. So, the new garage itself is also located in an area that's going to provide more privacy. Importantly, this special use permit recognizes the use that the church intends for the property, but it also provides very clear, specific protection for the surrounding neighborhood. The 750 property today is in the position it is because incremental development happened. That property as a single-family residence really ended up being compromised because there was no buffering. So, if you would like me to review the conditions, I will. There are also findings provided in your staff report. Staff recommendation is to move forward and recommend approval of the special use permit. And I would like to thank all the church representatives and the neighbors for really working together and allowing this to come forward. I think when you have a petition before you and you don't have a room full of people, I think that is a clear indication that the process does work. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Would anybody like her to go through?
No.
No? Okay, thanks Kathy. What we'd like to do now is to have the board ask any questions that they might have for clarification from either the petitioner or the staff. Sam?
Kathy, did any of the neighbors talk to you after the discussion, besides Mr. Marsh, in favor or rejection of the project?
Yes, there were a number of emails that involved all of the neighbors who had participated in the process. The revised landscape plan was sent out. The revised conditions were sent out last week. Heard from Mr. Landis, who lives directly west, that he is in support of the revised plan, in support of the conditions, and we heard no objection from anyone else who was copied on the various emails.
Great, thank you.
Rosemary?
No questions, Cardi, thanks.
Yeah, this goes to the neighbors as well. It's my understanding some of them reside in Florida, and the parking is the issue with respect to the neighbors. I would just wanna make sure that you're comfortable, that there's been ample time for everybody to bring in on the nine parking spaces.
All of the neighbors, even those who are now out of town, participated in the various meetings, and they have all been copied on all the emails. So, even those who are out of town, I feel are fully aware and had ample opportunity to raise any further concerns. But my sense is that there really is a high level of comfort with the proposed plan, and the lengthy discussions that occurred involved many of the neighbors. And as Mr. Johnson said, they occurred two, three, four times, and certainly worked to, I think, get a lot of issues even beyond this special use permit out on the table. So, I think they really built some good ongoing neighbor relationships.
Intuitively, I felt that was gonna be your answer, and even though it may be a hardship to be here physically for every hearing, they could have sent an email, and I see nothing in writing, email or letter-wise, to indicate they have any issues here.
I did clarify specifically with Mr. Landis. I emailed him over the weekend and said, "Based on this, can I fairly represent to the commission that you are in support?" And he indicated yes. So, I don't have a specific email from him, but I can assure you that he did authorize me to state his support.
In your earlier comment about the new location of the garage, actually screening the existing parking for him is something that occurred to me too, so that's a benefit to him. My other question has to do page four, condition 12. And even though I have a better chance of winning the lotto than the church probably ever wanting to re-subdivide this lot and putting it back out on the market, my question is, if they were to decide to divest themselves of this, number one, it would have to be a re-subdivision, but two, do you envision it would just be re-subdivided back into the original configuration of the lot as it exists today? Or would you permit them, or would staff be willing to permit them to re-subdivide it in a different consideration? And what I'm thinking about is that parking. Ideally, and again, I know this is a one, and who knows how many, that the church would ever spin the manse back off to the private sector again. I wouldn't wanna see the lot reconfigured and the nine new parking spaces left as part of the original. My preference personally would be to see the lot go back in its original platted configuration with an obligation of the church to remove the parking and restore that to green space. Would that be a problem?
The way that condition was written, that was the intent, that it clearly would need to go through the re-subdivision process. And in that condition, it states, "In any event, no re-subdivision of the property shall occur that reduces the size of the lot beyond what exists today." So, that clearly was a concern of the neighbor, that a future subdivision not create a very small lot that's out of character. So, that is the intent of that condition, to at least give that direction. We certainly can't bind any future city council.
Right.
But at least with it in the special use permit, I think it's very clear that that is the intent.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking they could take the land under those two frame cottages and add that to the lot to meet the area requirement, and so then the parking would be a carve-out left with the church. I know it wouldn't make as much sense as restoring it to the original configuration, but they could still, they have other contiguous lands they could add to it so that it meets that criteria. So, I was thinking maybe it should be more specific and say, "Restore it back to the same dimensions of the original planted lot."
We can certainly amend that condition?
I mean, is my point realistic, or am I reaching?
I think it's consistent with the intent, that if there were, if there was a future subdivision, that it would be reconfigured consistent with the way it exists today.
Okay.
But we couldn't bind any future city council. So, if you wanna suggest clarification language for that, the board can certainly do that.
When we vote on it, make sure you make that clear. Okay.
Can I follow up on that question?
Anything else, Mike?
I have nothing else.
Okay.
Dan has a final?
Can I just follow up on that chain, same train of thought? But if they wanted to do a re-subdivision, the current lot is not conforming in terms of minimum lot size, correct?
Correct.
So hypothetically, if they wanted to re-subdivide, not only would they have to go back to the original configuration, but they'd have to actually carve out another piece of the existing church property to make it a subdivisible lot?
Or request a variance.
Or a variance.
And that last sentence in that condition was acknowledging that someone, that they could come in with a request for re-subdivision. It's in the R4 zoning...
R3?
R3 zoning district. It doesn't currently meet that minimum lot size. They certainly could request a variance, but that statement was put in there to try to make it clear that Board Member Adelman's comment was the intention, that if there is a re-subdivision, that it takes the same shape.
Similarly, they would need a variance for the garage, the newly constructed garage, correct?
Correct.
Because that would be too close to the sideline?
Correct.
Okay.
It would be a very difficult subdivision.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, Angel?
I just wanted to clarify, if you were talking about Mr. Landis, he lives at 766 Sheridan, the lot directly...
The lot directly west.
Next to the 750.
Yes.
Okay. And then I have one question on condition two discusses the people that could potentially live in the house. They talk about the pastor or church clergy members or other member of the church. And then there's another section, the last sentence, you know, other than the people described above should be in full conformance of the requirements. Is that anticipating potential renters in the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Not anticipating, but it's trying to cover that eventually, or that possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Kathy, can you help me understand the distinction between condition one and the second sentence of condition two?
I think it was reemphasized in condition two simply to be clear that it's not to be rented for any other purpose. So, you're correct, there is some redundancy there, but I think the intent was really to emphasize if this isn't a manse for the pastor, that the other uses should be very carefully considered by the church, and that they all need to be consistent with the single-family
But the only use permitted would be as a single-family residence?
Correct.
Okay. I guess I'm still not clear.
It is redundant.
Shall be consistent with all?
I think it was just placed there for emphasis.
But it won't be consistent with all regulations in terms of lot size?
Correct.
So, the use should be consistent, okay. And then it's section two, any occupancy shall be in full conformance with all requirements and regulations, although it won't be in full conformance because it's not up to the Maybe I'm missing something, but I... Is the intent there to say that it's not going to be used basically for church purposes? It's gonna be used as a single-family residence? It's not gonna be used for hosting?
That's the intent.
Church families?
The primary intent is that it is to be used as a home for the pastor and the pastor's family. That is certainly the stated intent, but we did wanna recognize that if there's a pastor who chooses not to live there for whatever reason, we wanted to recognize that there may be some other opportunity. It may be another employee of the church. Theoretically, it could be rented out to someone else. So, we wanted to just emphasize that in any event, it needs to be occupied in a manner consistent with the single-family residential zoning district. So, maybe there's some language that you can suggest to clarify that.
Well, if you're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it because my guess is you're gonna be, or your successor will be the ones trying to interpret this in years to come. The only other comment I had was on the condition seven, I think it's the third paragraph on bottom of page three. To facilitate use of the church yard, and it talks about may have one or more gates to allow passage into the yards. As I understood it, the intent there was to basically not, was not necessarily to facilitate the use of the church yard, but to limit the use of the church yard because the neighbors were concerned about other things going on in there, that the intent was there's gonna be some sort of limited access point into it? Is that the gist or the goal of that paragraph?
I think it's both to facilitate and limit. When we talked about fencing off that east side, that was something the neighbors very clearly wanted, but the church also wanted to make sure that, for instance, on occasion the preschool children may walk over for a 20-minute storytime or something. So, I think it is to facilitate the church use of the yard, but I think the addition of "and limit" is probably consistent with the discussion today.
I guess the bigger question is, when it says "may have one or more gates," is the goal, is the staff recommendation that it may have gates or that it should have some sort of limited access points so that it will be more private to the church as opposed to the general public? Because if it's to try to limit the access, then it would seem to me that you would say it will, you know, that the access points will be by, or shall be by, gates as opposed to having it open on three sides.
I think there's other conditions that speak to the requirement for fencing. So, I think the intent of this was just to acknowledge that there would be some gates. But your point is, do we wanna say there shall be gates instead of simply breaks in the fence?
And I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but that was what I thought was where staff was coming from with respect to that. And if that is, then it would seem to me that that wording could be...
So, let's change "may" to "shall," and do you need more than two gates? Shall have one or two gates?
Shall have one or more gates, yeah?
That's good.
Well, for nine parking spaces, I don't think we mind like nine. That's probably true.
One there and one up here.
Oh, I thought we were just talking about this.
Yeah. Let's just run it right there.
I'm here fine with that.
Cardi, if I could ask a question on condition seven? Rocco's design, Kathy's taken into fact, if the church elects to do the nine additional spaces, appropriate drainage and other runoff issues have been addressed within Rocco's design?
Yes, if they wanted to pave that area, we would then issue a permit for that and engineering would review that. that and engineering would review the drainage.
Fabulous, thank you.
Make sure it's appropriately graded.
Great, fabulous. No other questions?
Any other, no other questions? Anything else, Dan? Okay. It's time now for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to, uh, make a comment? Come forward. No one? Okay. Are there any other questions, uh, from the board of either the staff or the petitioner? Nothing else?
No.
Nothing else? Okay. Then it's time, uh, well, let's, let's see if the petitioner has any, have you got any rebuttal or anything else that you would like to say?
I, I wouldn't call it rebuttal, I just wanted to clarify one of the earlier questions. We had a meeting Saturday afternoon with Mr. Landis, Bob Shaw and I, uh, and we reviewed this very plan, uh, in detail. And his earlier concerns had been the, uh, churchyard. And we provided this gate and this gate so people could leave the churchyard either in a protected way in the existing parking lot or with some supervision across here, and he was fine with that. We said, I've, I've learned a lot about evergreens in this process that I didn't think I'd ever need to know, um, but there are evergreens that grow well in sun, so those have been specified here, and there are evergreens that grow better in shade, and those have been specified here.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, it's time for us then to, uh, determine where do we go with this? Discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
May I recommend, uh, I guess just discussion before making motion?
Okay.
You know, recommend, uh, approval of it. I, I would suggest that in sections seven, third paragraphs, has my offer changed "may" to "shall." And other than that, I would say it should be supported.
Does that work? Kathy?
Yes, um, I wanted to ask you, wanted us to also clarify in conditions one and two that we're talking about consistent with the uses permitted in R3, acknowledging that, that some other, uh, regulations of the R3 district are not met?
I mean, I suppose to be
We can certainly do that.
Clear about that, I probably ought to say that because it's not going to be in compliance with the requirements of R3.
So we'll just clarify that it's with, with respect to the use in R3. And then, um, a question about Board Member Edelman's comment, um, condition number 12, um, we could clarify that, um, that in the event re-subdivision of the property is, is requested, um, that, that the consideration should be to re-establish the lot as it exists today, and I'll, I'll play with the wording on that.
Right.
Just restore it to the original platted lot
Right.
And remove the nine parking spaces if they exist.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Is there a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of the variances submitted based on the findings as stated on pages two, three, and four of the staff report dated January 26, 2011. The plead staff report materials included in the package and the public testimony are incorporated as part of the findings, um, along with the changes recommended by, uh, board members tonight.
Okay.
My second.
Second?
Just clarifying special use permit as opposed to variance.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
Discussion on the motion. Are you ready for a question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, your, uh, special use permit is approved. I want to thank the church, the neighbors, the staff for the hard work that went into making this work for everybody concerned. Thank you very much. We'll let them leave first before we... We'll get you there about 7:30. Is that soon enough?
They got a lot of issues with this one.
With this one?
Yeah.
Really?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Then you control the time.
Seriously? You gotta be kidding.
What happened to Kathy? Where'd she go? Oh, there she is. Okay. The next item on the agenda is a new petition, a request for approval of variances from the side and rear yard setback requirements to allow modification to the existing attached garage at 865 Church Road. Owners, Walter and Nancy Johnston, representative John Krasnodobski, arch- architect. For those who are going to speak, I need to swear you in. Uh, John, you're going to be one that speaks, are either one of you going to speak? Okay. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Uh, let me ask the board now if there are any conflicts of interest or ex parte conflicts relative to this petition?
No.
No.
Okay. John, you're going to give the presentation?
Great. Good evening, Chairman Davis, Commissioners. Uh, thanks for listening to our petition tonight. My name is John Krasnodobski. I'm the architect for this project, and I'm joined here tonight by the homeowners, Walt and Nancy Johnston, and, uh, their home is at 865 Church Road. And, uh, we're here tonight to request, uh, two variances from the zoning code, a variance from the side yard setback and a variance from the rear yard setback. So I'm going to start out by showing you some photographs of the neighborhood. And, uh, in the, starting in the upper left-hand corner, this is a streetscape view of the Johnsons' home from Westminster looking westward. You can see, uh, beyond the trees, that's the home. It's a corner lot, and, uh, the home sits back, uh, on the lot. I'll go over the site plan in a minute. And, uh, here's a streetscape view, uh, looking west on Westminster. So the home is, uh, to the right of these bushes here, um, so it'd be off the page kind of where my pointer is. So it's, it's well-screened, uh, by the street, which is kind of a nice thing. And here's a streetscape view looking north on Church Road. Their driveway entrance is right, right here where I'm pointing. And, uh, this is another streetscape view looking east on Westminster, and that's their home on the left there. So, um, it's a nice thing that they do have all that, uh, very mature vegetation. And here's another grouping of photographs. Uh, and here we have some closer-up shots of the home. This is looking right at the throw of the driveway to the Johnsons' home, so you can see it sits very far back on the lot. Here's the garage, and, uh, we're requesting a small addition above the garage and a connecting link from that room that's going to be above the garage to the main home. Here's a view, uh, on Church looking at the Johnsons' home, which is right here, you can barely see it, but that's where it is, beyond all that vegetation. Uh, here's a view standing in the middle of the street in front of their home. So there's the driveway, uh, and the home is beyond. Uh, here is a view, um, of the neighbor standing right at the garage looking, uh, towards the east. So this is a, there's a home, and this is the fence line, and so I'm kind of standing with my back to their garage, looking in that direction. Uh, and here's a closer-up yet details of the home, and here we can see closer the garage, and even a closer-up shot. I wanted to show you the vegetation that is along the east property, excuse me, that's the north property line there. Uh, so this is existing, uh, setback of 7.4 feet, and the current zoning code requires 12 feet. So it's an existing non-conformity in that side yard setback as well as the rear yard setback. Um, the requirement here is 35 feet, so there's a significant amount of the garage and the home itself that is non-conforming in its current state. And that is due primarily to the zoning code change. When this home was built, the current zoning code wasn't in effect, it was a different set of rules, so this new, relatively new zoning code had stricter setback requirements, and, and that's why a significant part of this home is, is non-conforming. Uh, just want to show you this view of the neighbor to the north. Uh, so I think it's great that there's all this, uh, mature vegetation on the lot because it helps mitigate the impact of any addition to the home. Here's a site plan, and I've done, um, the side yard setback and rear yard setback in a bold line so you can get indication of how much of the home is in that rear yard setback. I've cross-hatched where the addition is going to, it, where it's proposed, and it's, um, no change to the existing footprint, it's all within the existing footprint of the home. It's essentially above the existing garage and, uh, and a connecting hallway that leads from the bedroom to that, it's a bathroom above the garage. So we're trying to minimize the impact and these non-conformities, um, and still maintain an effective, uh, functional room and something that's in keeping with the existing architecture of the home, and also something that, uh, is going to really make this beautiful old home, uh, more livable. So I'm going to go to the drawings of the exterior elevation. So here you see the garage addition, uh, that we're proposing. It's essentially a three and a half foot increase in the wall height. I've cross-hatched it, uh, in this form here, so you get an idea of the volumetric change. Uh, so it's very minimal, uh, and we're achieving, um, the space in the bathroom, um, by a dormer here to get the headroom required for, for that room. And this area here is a much lower, almost a flat roof, and so this is basically the hall that gets to the bathroom from the home. So that's part of the, uh, addition as well. I've struck this line here so you get a feel for where the setback line is, um, in elevation form. So, um, I think that's kind of helpful. And then the rear, it's a very similar situation. I didn't cross-hatch here, but it's three and a half feet of additional volume to that garage roofline, and of course, the connecting link to the home. Uh, one of the primary, um, design features, uh, was to really try to keep it as low as possible so that the main home is still the primary volume and is still secondary in nature. Of course, all the materials are going to match the existing materials, so it's going to be very sensitive to the existing architecture, and we think it's going to blend in very well with the existing home. I'm going to show you also a side view. So this is the, uh, the north elevation, um, so you can see the additional three and a half feet here. And then this dormer is in a different plane than this surface. It's setback, that face of that dormer is six inches away from conforming to that 12-foot yard setback. So, um, that was, again, done purposefully so we could really, uh, diminish the volume that's in that setback area. So we think that it, it meets all the requirements of the zoning code, uh, as far as, uh, you know, it's minimal impacting to the streetscape and the neighborhood, uh, you know, it's sensitive to the existing site and, and to the neighborhood. And, um, it doesn't, uh, we're not asking for variances in the bulk, it's all within the existing bulk, uh, that's allowed for the site. And, uh, so we're fortunate that we have so much mature screening that's around the home. So I think really it's, you know, you just have to stand in that driveway to see it, otherwise it's practically invisible. So, um, we're hoping that, uh, you agree and you allow us to do this modest addition to the home and really, um, make a great improvement to it. So, uh, I'll listen to any questions you can have. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy? Staff?
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Um, I don't have much to say, very comprehensive presentation. Uh, this situation was created by a change that the city made to the zoning district that applies to the property. Uh, the house was constructed in 1935, uh, at that time in full conformance with the zoning that applied to the property. The city later changed the zoning, uh, creating the non-conforming situation. As Mr. Krasnodobski stated, there is no change to the footprint. What is proposed is, uh, really building upon, uh, an existing part of the structure. As he noted, uh, care was taken to keep the height down, minimizing the additional encroachment, and specifically, the dormer on the north face of the elevation is pulled back, um, so that, uh, the encroachment into the setback is minimal. No building scale variation is required, this is consistent with, um, the lot coverage as well as, uh, building scale. Uh, so the request before you is approval of a side yard setback variance on the north side and a rear yard setback, uh, to allow the addition of height, but not the expansion of the structure. We did not receive any, uh, comments from neighbors on this. Public notice was mailed and was publicized, um, and I don't know whether conversations occurred, but we, uh, did not receive any questions or any objections. So the staff recommendation is to, uh, support the requested variances and move this forward to a city council. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board of the petitioner or the staff?
I have none.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question, uh, for Mr. Kras-
Okay.
-Nodobski. I understand how the garage is being elevated three and a half feet, but now how does it join to the existing home? Clearly, that has to have a higher ridge line as well, and wouldn't that also be within the setback requirement?
Correct, it is, yes. That connecting hallway that goes to the bathroom, so there's essentially a one-story structure there now with a shallow pitched roofline. And so to get that headroom for that hallway, we are springing from the same eve line that exists now, but going with a steeper roofline to accommodate passage through it. So I'm going to show you, uh, a drawing that I think best describes it. So you can see, the existing ridge line is here of this roof above this door. So we're going from that line to that line so that a person can walk through there. So yes, that is part of the variance request, that is in the rear yard setback, um, that portion of the, uh, project. It's all shingles here, there's no dormers, um, so the idea is to make it blend in and kind of go away. The shingles will, you know, darken over time, and it's not painted white like the rest of the home. So, and it recedes back, uh, from your, from your vantage point. So, um, again, we try to minimize, uh, that element of it, uh, but it, it's necessary for the, the success of the addition.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mike? Where are all your questions?
Let's continue.
Okay. Angie?
Um, I just have one brief question. I believe it's stated in either the staff report of yours that other conforming options were looked at, but none of them were really workable. Could you expand a little bit on that?
Yeah, we thought about doing the addition in other parts of the home, uh, for instance, on the, the south side of the home because there's more yard there, and so we contemplated that, but that we thought would be more impactful to the neighborhood and to the home and less, uh, we thought this was more of a minimal, uh, impact to the home, so we felt that this was a more desirable solution to the, uh, expansion needs of the Johnsons'. There'd be a variance requirement for that as well, to put it on that side of the home, so we figured since this is the most, almost invisible part, that this would make the most sense.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions.
Stu?
Uh, no questions. It's a, it's a great Stanley Anderson house, it's...
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, we, we appreciate it. Okay. There's, uh, no public here for public testimony unless the owners would like to make a comment. No? Okay. Uh, any other questions, uh, from the board of either the petitioner or the staff?
No.
Okay. If not, then, uh, discussion on the petition. Okay, if not, then discussion on the petition.
I have none. I think that they have done a very good job as far as making it as minimal as possible, screening it from the neighbors. There's evergreens all around that house. It looks, it would blend in perfectly. I see no reason.
If anything, I think it improves the scale and proportion of the original home.
Mike?
I agree with both of you, plus I think the house has a lot of charm and character. I didn't know it was Stanley Anderson. Does it say that in here?
I don't believe it is, but it is a Stanley Anderson.
Oh, that kind of reconciles. It's got a lot of charm and character. And I also noticed that the walk-in closet is labeled "hers," and it's twice as large as the other closet space, and that's the way it should be.
Good petition, very well done.
I have nothing further.
I would move to recommend approval of the variances proposed and accepting and adopting the findings as a fact of staff.
And I would second.
Okay, discussion. Ready for the questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. The petition is passed. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Okay.
I would just like to add that both petitions tonight, I thought, were fantastic and echoing Kathy's earlier comments. The first one in particular was the testimony to how the process works. I mean, we vetted that pretty well, I thought, when it was here the first time. They worked with the neighbors, they came back. This petition before us tonight, it was comprehensive. It was easy to go out there, look at the property, and reconcile what you proposed. And it's a pleasure to have worked on these two petitions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kathy, anything else for us?
As of this afternoon, we do not have any petitions filed for next month's meeting. Doesn't mean something couldn't come in. We're technically past the deadline, but we have some flexibility before we have to do legal notice. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, and we will confirm with you in the next week or two.
Do you anticipate anything coming in?
I don't believe any of the staff have had conversations that, you know, we're working on this piece and we'll have it in tomorrow. So I'm not aware of anything, but we could be surprised. But as it stands today, there are no petitions filed.
Okay, what about March? Is anything coming that will...
Cardi's trying to plan a spring break, I think.
That's what I'm trying to plan right now.
There still is certainly time to submit for March. I would hope that we'd have some petitions for March. I'm less certain. I'm fairly confident that February, it doesn't look like anything will come forward. March is a little bit far for me to forecast that.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Is there a motion for German?
Someone?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good meeting.